We'll call our council meeting to order at six oh two P M. The town of Culhers is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people with their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all issues, peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. We'll move right into the adoption of the agenda. Is there any opposition to the agenda? No? And then we do have a couple of minutes here. So the first one that we have is from the December third regular council meeting minutes. Is are those welcome with everybody for some changes? Well, no opposition? Alright. Moving on to the December tenth committee of the whole meeting minutes. Any opposition to the minutes? Alright, with that, we're gonna move right into our staff report. So in front of us, we do have the administration update report. I'm just going to go to council to see if there are any questions on this.
I just I was curious what happens with the trees after they're collected.
Hmm, sure. Uh, through the chair to the council. When they're collected, they're taken for shipping at the Lethbridge Barnville. So it's all organic.
Any other questions? No. Thank you to everybody for contributing to our last, I guess, last report for twenty twenty four. Uh, the next item that we have is the status of directive resolutions report. And um, maybe I will just, Larry, would you like to to speak to this at all? Or is it something that's just more self explanatory just for us to know enough?
The latter.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you.
Sure. Um, any questions from anybody on the on the report that we received? Yeah, no?
Thank you, um, just a comment. Some of them have that that council move or, you know, that council adopted. Some of them have the name of the mover as well. They don't include like who voted for and against. Is that something that we would want to see on here? Or um, I guess, how does council feel about it? I guess one more thing too is they don't have a date on them of when the motion was made. And again, just if if before doing this kind of keep that reading for me, take the public along with us. Say, when we should have a date on um, when the motion was made. And then as um, motions are adopted by council, they become council's motion, right? So if we're not gonna put who's against or who's for, maybe we should just take out the name of who sponsored the motion. But that was just a thought that I had.
Um, I'll look to council to see if there's any thoughts. I think the deputy mayor is go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of agree with deputy mayor. I think, you know, if it was just talking about council made motion, I think if anyone was really interested in how that vote went there, be able to go access the minutes and see who made the motion, who voted for it, anything like that. I think this is more of a document just to show the status of the motions. So I don't think we need to necessarily bring all that fine detail along with it as long as it's just showing council as a whole has made this motion and this is the current status of it. Although I do would appreciate when the motion is made as a date on there too, just so we can kind of track things that way as well.
Thank you. Anything on the council motion?
Yeah, I think I think like before I became on council, I didn't understand that promotions, no matter who made them, could be, you know, if I made a motion, I could go against that motion, right? So um, uh, you know, being on council now, I understand that. And that the majority of council supported that motion, therefore it becomes now a direction from council. So uh, I I certainly understand, I think, what uh, council Florence is suggesting with the revisions. But at the same time, like our minutes are recorded this way. So I I don't really think it has a major change either way in my opinion. But um, if yeah, if there is. Yeah, because otherwise then it should be put out in the minutes that way too. Yeah, I guess you're reporting for it against there, so maybe it's not that good issue. That that's that's my thoughts. I I'm pretty busy going on.
I just wanna go to our director of life services to get your thoughts on that in terms of how that like based on recording things like that, just so we can know.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Montina. I know when our C A O, Carleen, was putting this together, excuse me, it was a a struggle with some of the formatting. It doesn't transfer over very nicely from teens, I think, where she got much of this. And there were just a number of issues in any event. But I see what you're saying and, you know, maybe she didn't notice that, I didn't notice it. But we could, for example, take out, you know, the motion numbers maybe, who made it, and simply add another column. And that column would be what at, you know, the date of the meeting at which such motions were made. Is that, I think that's what we're coming moving towards maybe if I'm understanding correctly. But that's no problem. Next time we can, you know, refine it a little bit. Just was like I said, some computer glitches and Carleen really put some work into getting it to look as good as it does honestly. So yeah, thanks.
Great. Everyone okay with that? Yeah?
Yeah, no, definitely okay with that and and appreciate the discussion. And um, for the record, I think it's it's incredible like the the amount of motions that are made and then the ones that are actually checked off. And there's quite few progress, but it's it's always really cool to see this written out and what's all on the go. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, if there's something else on that one, we'll move to seven point three, the community grant program. So we do have the a memo in front of us regarding the community grant program. I'm going to just go to council to ask if there's any questions on this. Yes, go ahead.
I guess just um, would it be possible going forward like um, just to have periodic updates on what grants are out there? Maybe on a semi annual basis? Just because if we have like the Legion Grant, which is gonna be December twenty twenty five, very well could forget about that. Or if new council comes on, then it would be good to kind of refresh them after what they're at. But I do like this, the information how it's presented where it shows the grants and the dates where the reports are gonna be coming in. So I think that that's that's handy to do where you deal with. So make sure that um, these are being used appropriately.
Deputy mayor?
Um, just a question of clarification for um, councillor Adams. So the um, in the report, it says that post event reports for twenty twenty four grant recipients are not expected to be received until January or February, and then they will be provided to council. Did you want more than that or was that adequate?
I was just thinking um, more so just like a status of what community grants are out there, right? So if it's like, you know, come January, February, we're getting those reports, then K goes once and then completed, almost like a status of motions report. Just kind of like, you know, this one's outstanding, but this is the date that it'll be coming in. You can fix just like twice a year or something, just to kind of keep us aware of what's out there and when things should be reported back.
Great, and you have other thoughts?
I don't think we need to do that, but I think. It's yeah, sorry, that's just my thought.
Yeah.
Sorry. Any thoughts for you?
No.
You're you're pretty easy, go ahead.
That's that's right.
Um, I think for myself, I think because there's so few of them, I'm not sure that that I feel like we need that. I feel like it's something that you're tracking kind of internally. Um, and so I like I myself don't need that, but can understand where you're coming from.
I think it would suggest if it was more of like the micro grants or something like that then. But if it's just smaller and all of a sudden, fine, if just things coming in, I think I know. I I guess at the end of the day, my goal is just to make sure that the funds are used appropriately and those reports are making it back to administration, right?
Yeah, and I guess I look at that as an administrative function, right? Where like Chris will will get them regardless and and bring them back to us. Might not within the time frame that we hope, but I trust that you that you would do that.
Yeah.
So are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent, alright. We're going to move on. Let me make sure there isn't anything yet. Okay, we're gonna move on to the community standards bylaw. Um, and what we're going to do with this, so we do, we do have the R F D um, in front of us for I believe these are all the things that we wanted to have happen here. We've also got um, the memo that has a lot of the research that we had had requested be be done for the bylaw. And so one of the suggestions that we had at um, our agenda setting is that we go through each of the sections of the um, of the memo and have a discussion about that and determine if we want to sit up and in or what we'd like to do with that. So just a question for you, Larry, with that.
Yes.
If we go through each section this way, um, do we need to have a motion for each of them? Or what is the best way to do that?
That's how we have kind of proposed it and envisioned it, Mayor, honestly.
Okay.
You know, some of the things are quite different from the other direction. So if we have it all sort of on the bus, if that's the right word together, it might be confusing. So we have separate motions proposed at this.
Perfect, okay. Alright, so let's let's go through this here. We'll start at um, so first of all, number one, just to to clarify here that all of the motions from our October fifteenth um, meeting, they've all been put into the into the bylaw. So we don't need, do we need to have a motion for that one actually, Larry? Or, so I don't see what I'm bringing down here. The first one was about snow, but do we need to have a?
No, because it came from a regular meeting.
Perfect, okay, thank you. So we'll move on then to to the next part here, um, which is number two, about snow removal. And you can see that there's a bunch of research done um, with the recommendation. And so I'm curious from council if anybody would like to to make a motion um, based on the recommendation or something different. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion based on the recommendation.
Sure.
Um, so I move that council would approve the recommendation for section two of the.
We have a we have a big motion that we have that on.
Oh, you have an motion there? Oh, perfect, sure. Yeah, I can read that one. That's even better. Um, so I moved that the requirement for the Culhers property owners to remove snow and ice from adjacent sidewalks within forty eight hours of accumulation be retained in the traffic bylaw and also placed within the community standards bylaw. With clear instructions to not place snow and ice on municipal property and further that the bylaw be amended by adding provision which allows the town to cause the snow to be removed at the offender offending properties or its expense.
Excellent. Let's see if there's any questions on the motion. Um, would you like to speak to this at all?
I just wanna say thank you to administration for doing the work in this and identifying the um, the part about um, removing the offending or the snow if it's not being dealt with properly. And then I think forty eight hours is a fair number based off what I'm seeing. That's what we currently have.
Great, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Okay?
Thank you. Um, yeah, tons of research in here. Thank you for putting that all together. I, one of my suggestions is gonna be that we should change the name of this bylaw to the Good Maple bylaw. Like, I really think that's kind of nice. But I I I appreciate that's going into both of the bylaws so that um, it'll be very clear. No, no um, questions around why it needs to be done or where it should be found. So I'm very much in support of this.
Um, anybody else? Not, would you like to close the ball? Alright, um, so councillor Adams has made the motion to accept the recommendations. Not gonna read the whole thing out there yet. Um, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor? The motion is carried. So the next section here has to do with um, the boulevard and having a definition within um, for boulevard. Boulevard within the bylaw. Again, I will ask if anyone from council would like to make this motion. Would you have a motion pre-prepared? Would you like to use that one, so it's free? Sure, go ahead.
Um, I move that the addition of the definition of boulevard in the bylaw be approved.
Excellent. Um, any questions on the motion?
I I well, it's a question on the motion, but um, so when I look at the definition, I guess a good question, but within definition of boulevard, I guess it was more about the intent as to uh, like we talked about shoveling the sidewalk. In this case, the boulevard is excluding the sidewalk. So um, kind of, yeah, I guess, I guess why why would we exclude the sidewalk from the definition?
So we're not a question on the motion, but a question on like the actual like information?
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, okay, maybe we'll like we'll leave a motion for a number of it and maybe we can get some clarification on that. Um, so I'm not sure, John, if that's something that like that you had done or or Larry or who, how that got there?
This was your your assignment?
Yes, so I put that in there stealing the wording from other bylaws from other municipalities. And excuse me, as I recall, it is written the way it is because sidewalks are dealt with separately and exclusively and explicitly. So um, you know, kind of differentiating sidewalk from boulevard, which is anything, you know, kind of public owned linear, uh, you know, piece of land excluding sidewalks. I probably not a great answer, but no, that makes that makes sense actually.
Great, is that that's good for you? Great, okay. Um, so we're going back, so you made the motion to to have that on there. Um, would you like to speak to it at all?
Um, no, I think it's sound, it's pretty self-sensory.
Great, would anybody else like to speak to it? If not, um, deputy mayor has made a motion to add the definition of boulevard in the bylaw. Um, I will call question, all those in favor? That's carried. Um, we'll move on to the next one, which is section four, which is about the best practices regarding vehicles on front yards or back yards as a way to allow use bylaw. Um, maybe what I'll do is I'll start out with for council. Is there any questions on the information that's been presented before I go on to ask it for an option?
Well, yeah, I I guess I do have a question about, so we're saying one, no more than one or just unregistered motor vehicle. The the recommendations that we have, no more than one registered motor vehicle being worked in. What what is that different from our current, how is that different from our current practice, I guess?
I don't have the bylaw memorized. Yeah.
I have no idea, I'm just curious, I'm curious what that is and what difference it is.
Cause like this would be a something new or a change?
Is it? I don't know.
Yeah.
That's the context I'm asking here, I think.
Larry, do we happen to have the other um, like our current bylaw available? And redlined copy is attached?
Oh. Yes, but I think if I'm not mistaken, Mayor, you're referring to a bylaw that we currently have on the books with that addresses this.
With that information in it, yes.
And I think it's maybe John can correct me, but it's in on citing.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so I could find out to what we.
Can we just take maybe like a five minute recess just to to find this information?
Okay.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have found some of the information within our current bylaw. And so maybe I'll just get you to tell us a little more about what our current bylaw states to answer Councilor Porter's question.
Absolutely, so in our nuisance or on the side of the bylaws, excuse that phrase, our onside bylaw. Definition of onside premise. Having a whole park vehicle or any vehicle defined in the Traffic Safety Act, you know, has no current license plate on it. That property will become deemed as an onside premise if there was more than the allowed number of unregistered vehicles or car parts. And that's what our current bylaw states, right? With the proposed, I think we're round out adding a number to, you know, an actual amount of how many unregistered vehicles you can have on the property. And then a clear definition of what unregistered is.
Thank you. Was that helpful to provide some context that you're looking for?
Yes, yes. I'm curious if this was, been in a follow-up question, I guess. It was in a, I'm sorry about this. When, what, did we coordinate this, I guess, with the land use bylaw requirements for starting a vehicle?
No, because you can, you can have a vehicle parked in your driveway, your yards, that's you're not to have that. If you, if your yard turns into a junkyard, then you don't think that would fall under the onside premise definition, right? Or this bylaw question.
Okay.
It like, it doesn't always have to, like, but there's different activities you can do on a property, right? It would fall, you know, it would bring the land use bylaw to question. But with this, where, you know, it's just, you are allowed to have vehicles on your property, trailers, and you can't have some car parts, right? If you're in your head, if I can use that phrase, that term. But it doesn't necessarily need to be labeled or put in the land use bylaw, I would say.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions from anybody? All right. So the recommendations state one vehicle. And from some of the research, there's some with two, there's some with, there's from one. So we've had that recommendation from one. Would anybody like to make a motion on this based on the recommendation or anything else? Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. That, that, oh my goodness. That the Town of Coleris Draft Community Standards File number four five seven dash two four include additional provisions that prohibit more than one unregistered motor vehicle from being parked on a residential property.
Any questions on the motion? Would you like to speak to this at all?
Just that, you know, there's been a lot of research put into this, if it should be one or more. And I think that, you know, when we're looking at this holistically, I think that one is kind of enough, whether you're geared or not. And I think that if it's really an issue down the road, we can look at it again. But for now, we're trying to just encourage people to not store many vehicles on their yard. So I think this is important.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
As I said, I was just trying, just going back to the land use bylaw question again. Sorry if I'm jumping all over, but is the the community standards bylaw, it doesn't apply if somebody actually has like a it doesn't apply to commercial properties, I guess, is the question?
That would be correct, because if you, if you had a convert, like a business, right? Your area that your business is in is owned for non-activity, right? So you wouldn't necessarily fall into that.
Okay. Sorry.
Right? All good?
Yes.
And there is no one else would like to speak to this? Deputy Mayor has made the motion. I will call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. We'll move on for our next section here. Looking at research on rules like lower skates and all those types of things. And maybe have some information on here. Does anybody have any question on section five? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just reading through this and I was needing a little bit of clarification, probably through the manner to our CPO officer. I was just wondering about, so if we, if we do the recommendation to dangerous and nuisance activities, like would biking on the sidewalk be included in that or would not be included in that?
Was there a recommendation?
Yes.
Include the version there.
Do you think the definition?
So I guess with that definition inserted into the bylaw, the dangerous act or slash nuisance activities, if you have, let's say a bike rider that's riding on sidewalks aggressively and being a danger or hazard, that's where that would, that's where that would regulate that activity. I'm not necessarily saying bicycles aren't allowed to be ridden on the sidewalk. As a parent, I wouldn't want my, my children riding their bikes and scooters on the street, right? As a driver, cyclists that ride in the middle of the road kind of drive me nuts. So that definition would cover what you just said, plus would allow for, for some bike riding on the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that very much answers it, because yeah, I had the same thought. Like, I know we're a small town and I understand that, you know, the traffic laws say we're supposed to bike on the road, but also, you know, like I have children, I don't want them biking down on the street and things like that. And so making it safe for everybody, but still being reasonable, I think is what's being said here. And I can very much appreciate that. And then, again, the research and even your comments about having kids and knowing what that's like. So I think that's great.
Is, is there a definition? So this definition hasn't been provided to us yet, though, right?
I believe it's in one of the research areas, maybe as an example of whatever Lethbridge City has. Is it in there later? I think it is. Can just take a second, see. Anybody sees it scanning? It's a little.
In the definitions?
Yeah, or just where I'm scrolling or where you're looking. In any of the research material that we provided, I thought that recommendation in the memo.
Not there. Well, I see all the examples there. And typically through the post bylaw markets, I know, of course, these are recommendations, right?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see it in the.
I thought there was, there was one.
Section seven regulates bicycles. And so the A, seven A, says except on pathways and facilities specifically set apart. So they, they do not offer provision for sidewalk on Lethbridge.
No person should write a last code, except on pathways. Except on maintained pathways.
Well, Ken, Lethbridge, they have provisions with the bike ride. Okay.
Right, okay. So administration is going to come back and bring a definition for us to along the lines of.
Or you're reading there, section, section fifteen. No person shall carry any action that could cause injury or blah, 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 blah. So, so section E there, that would be, that would be the definition as to what a dangerous activity would be, something like that. Sorry, it doesn't, it's not clearly labeled as that, but that's, that's the gist of it, yeah.
Yep.
Any of those things in section fifteen, I guess, would constitute a dangerous or nuisance activity, right? Someone's playing, someone's playing golf in the park, you know, driving her into the new, the new lake, right? That could hurt someone. But we could come up with a better definition for sure.
Is there any more questions? Go ahead.
Quick question, but just looking at section E there. I'm talking about like engaging in a stunt, right? That's activity you're operating type of mechanical apparatus. I would think that that would be kind of like, you know, respectfully riding a bicycle versus doing stick tricks and running, chasing people off the road.
Awesome athlete.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think that one, like when I was reading through this one, that one kind of covered the bike aspect for me because it just talks about like operating with mechanical apparatus in a way that's respectful, right? So it doesn't explicitly say bikes are allowed on sidewalks or not on sidewalks or whatever. But it's just talking about just the general behavior of the operator.
Great.
Just sorry, further question on this. So this section fifteen then will become the definition in the community standards bylaw, where it currently is not now. Okay.
Well, I thought we were going to call it that definition, is what I heard.
Yeah, we could, we would create a better, easier reading, cover-all definition.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So the, the definition just hasn't been drafted yet?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So with that then, is there any more questions on the material? We do have a suggested motion for this to have that definition. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll, I'll move back the draft community standards file four five seven dash two four. Be amended to include a definition for dangerous slash nuisance activities that this subsection in section four be created to include in our whole condition of parking in dangerous activities.
Excellent. Any questions on the motion? Not, would you like to speak to that at all?
I, I think it's important to have these things clear where they are in our bylaws so that people understand the law as a and, and we can maintain a safe community, a safe for everyone, so without being too restrictive.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to this? If not, Councilor Porter's made the motion. I will call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. Moving on to section six. We do have some information here. There is no recommendation along with this because the information's in the MGA. Any question on the material that's been provided for us? Thank you for doing the research on this. If there's none, we will carry on. The next one has to do with the scooters and the e-bikes. Again, with this, it isn't, there is no recommendations on this, I believe. And so again, thank you for doing the research and providing that information. It's very, very helpful. And then finally, section eight here. We have some information here on the bylaw finds and a recommendation. Any questions on, on the information or on this request? And not, would anybody like to make the motion?
To make that motion.
Sure.
So I move that council request administration to benchmark and research finds applicable to the new community standards bylaw and report back to council with its recommendations for the first offenses and subsequent offenses for each section within schedule eight.
Great. Any questions on the motion? Would you like to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I just, once again, I want to say thank you to administration for all the work on all the background information for this. I think that, you know, given what we've seen for the information coming forward already, asking for suitable finding levels, administration will come up with something that will work and seems to be on par with the general region, I guess. And just happy to see the good work come back to council.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this? If not, Councilor Ackerman has made the motion. I will call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. So with that, we will move right along now. We do have one, we have one motion or one recommendation that did come out of our, our committee of the whole. And so this is one that we just wanted to put forward here, it's under committee reports. And this was about the home occupation three. Would anybody like to make this motion?
Yeah, I can make that motion.
Sure.
I move that administration and/or CPO officers integrate home occupation three into land use bylaw, including research into greater intensity and working environment options for the January twenty first, twenty twenty five regular meeting, council.
Any questions on the motion? Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so we, at our committee of the whole, had the recommendation to bring this forward. We talked a lot about how there are certain uses which our community have, have a greater impact on our community than is currently permitted. And there may be situations where this could be applicable through my time on MSDA. I have seen certain uses come forward, requests from the community that we had to consider and provide many conditions around to, that end up restricting the use of the property for the intended business, which is of course to protect everyone. And if we had an option like this, it would give our residents a great opportunity to run their home businesses in a way, in a way that complies with the land use bylaw and, and ensures that communication between everybody when people are applying for it is, is very clear that this is a more intense application than, than, than home occupation two. So, yeah, so that's really, really why I think this motion is applicable to, to us today.
Cool, thank you. Would anybody like to speak to this? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I appreciate Councilor Porter's comments, the conversation that we had at the committee of the whole and, and the, the idea behind home occupation three. I however, am of the mind that I don't think that we need to have provisions for home occupation three because I think that within what we have for home occupation one and two is adequate enough to cover what we need in our land use bylaw. And I guess, I don't think it's going to accomplish what is being hoped from the work lift type of units. And I think that these things are really driven by demand and, and what the people want to do. And so I don't see it being a necessary thing at this point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Would you like to close it off?
Sure, I, I, you know, and maybe it's, maybe it's something that we need to go back to our community and, and have some more engagement on. I think, I think that's the, the whole thought behind the land use bylaw process was to give our community a, our community some options as to what they would like to see, right? So as reflected by this motion is that we are exploring the option not to just diminish it from before, we even get what that option could look like for our community. So that's, that's all I would say.
Great, thank you. All right, so with this, I will, so Councilor Porter's made this motion. I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. So now we'll move into our council reports. I'll talk about our verbal report. I was away for a couple of weeks, so thank you very much to Deputy Mayor for chairing the meeting as well as fun. I know there are some big things that kind of happened as well as fun, but it's great. So some of the things I've done since I've gotten back is that I had Shinnick Arch. We had our, we had both an executive meeting as well as our regular, regular meeting for, for the board. Also attended Mayor's and Reeves. We had our, our day long land use bylaw planning meeting, committee of the whole. We had our South Grove meeting. I was voted onto the executive again, as well as the agenda setting. And it looks like I will potentially be going on a trade mission for Canada, which is interesting. So just waiting to figure out a little more details about that. So this is with Team Canada. And yeah, so just looking into what that could look like, but I, I may be going on that mission. So anyways, that's kind of what I've been up to lately. So from there, yes.
Could you talk a little bit more about Team Canada and what you believe that's doing?
So it's with South Grove.
Okay.
So it'd be being on the, the executive board of South, or the executive of the board of South Grove. South Grove's been invited to participate within this. And so there's just a little bit more information that's being gathered right now about this in terms of, you know, whether we could go or not. In terms of myself being up to go, I know that one of the staff members will be going. But if my, I guess my attendance will be dependent upon, on some grants and things like that.
Very cool. Awesome, thank you.
So when I have more information, I will let you know. I don't have a ton of information on this one though. I've just been told to kind of tend to know the whole dating calendar.
That sounds awesome.
Yeah. So with that, we will move on to Deputy Mayor Florence's report.
Thank you. So for meetings and events I've attended, I went to my very first ORS board meeting and it was a Christmas social. ORS is a very large org, which was surprising to learn. I must have worked all here for the meeting. Okay, great. But yeah, it was really interesting. We, Councilor Ackerman's had been serving on it previously. So there was an increase for municipalities past, not as large as was originally proposed, but kind of just to ease municipalities into it, to get to where ORS needs to be. I unfortunately had to leave before the vote, but I would have voted to just rip the bandaid off and, and to charge the whole fee because I think that as a board, I think it's important to stay in a position where you're not falling behind and stay on top of that. So I'm happy to see that moving forward. We also had our land use bylaw review, which was very intense. And it was, it was great. Looking forward to further discussing the land use bylaw changes and, and getting that approved. This is a great tool. It's a regulatory tool, but it's a great tool for attracting folks to town and developers and business folks alike. And so I'm really excited to be working on this process as well. Had the agenda setting committee, the Christmas house judging, and we did not have MSDA yesterday. We will have our next meeting in the near. And then tomorrow, I have our final board meeting for community futures. And we have our intergovernmental relations committee coming up this week as well. Just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I'm not looking as festive as the mayor, but it's very exciting to be having the last meeting of twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Just sure you're not. You're really sweet, yeah. She has Christmas tree ears. Oh, look at that, that's your, good. All right, thank you for your report. Any questions for Deputy Mayor? If not, we'll go to the chairman.
Thank you. First, I want to send out a congratulations to somebody in town. I saw this on Facebook, but I wanted to share this. We have a student in grade eleven, Jane Green. She had recently won the Odd Fellows Young Ambassador UN speech in Lethbridge. She'll actually have a chance to deliver her speech to the UN headquarters in New York. And I just wanted to say, great job. I'm sure you'll do fantastic and enjoy your trip. I think that that's really neat that somebody from our community can have such an impact and opportunity. So congratulations, Jane. Beyond that, I had Economic Strategy Committee for our municipalities. We had a couple of presentations from Perry's Can, Center for Newcomers Society, Calgary Mutual Housing Association for the Prairie Provinces. If anyone is interested in any of those presentations, I do have a copy, I think two of them that I'd be able to relay on. And then I just gave a quick update at Mayor's and Reeves. And then we had a little bit of a staff appreciation committee, just kind of going over the final plans for the appreciation event in January. And then just the land use bylaw review and the Christmas lights judging, which I thought was absolutely fantastic. There's lots of decorated houses out there. I would hope that more people will put their name forward next year because there are some fantastically decorated houses that didn't decide to enter for one reason or another. But it was so great to go and through the community and see all that festive spirit from those that had entered and those that didn't. And then like Deputy Mayor Florence, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a happy new year to everyone. Enjoy the holiday season.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilor Ackerman? Not, we'll go to Councilor Porter.
Thanks for mentioning that. For myself, I was able to attend the land use bylaw review meeting, all-day meeting that we had last week. And as well as I was planning to do the Christmas house decorating contest, but we have like three offers. One offer, we're selling our house, we're doing part colors. One offer ended up canceling, that was a closing day, like, and the other two came in. So it was a bit crazy, so. A real estate agent coming over and everything was fun, so. All good news, though. But I'm sure I'll get to go see the houses. And then, yeah, community meetings, we have intergovernmental relations, and then government meeting for Christmas. But I know everyone will enjoy the time off, I hope. And yeah, wishing everybody Merry Christmas as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilor Porter? All right, if not, we'll move on here. So we did have the one correspondence, which was the STSS board minutes. Is there, if there's any questions on that? I know Councilor Calbell's on the committee or on the count, on the board, but she is not here today. Otherwise, we can move into closed session. Go ahead.
Yeah, you can make a motion. So I move that pursuant to section twenty one disclosure on full to your governmental relations. Section twenty three, local public body confidences. And section twenty four, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act, that council entered closed session at six forty eight P M regarding a draft agreements update and intergovernmental relations matter.
Excellent. Question, all those in favor? That's carried.
Um, can we get a motion to go back into open session please? Alright.
I'm with that council reconvenes the open session of council at seven forty four P M.
Excellent. Put question all in the paper. That's carry. And we don't have any business arising from our closed session. So we will adjourn at seven forty four P M. Um, happy holidays everybody. We'll see you I guess the new year.